To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We are fortunate tonight to have a presentation which Dr. McLaughlin will certainly introduce in just one second, and then we will hold off public discussion until after the presentation.
Thank you. So, we're thrilled to have our students from Stony Brook School with us tonight who are going to perform with Mr. Jacobson. And if you guys come over and take your positions, we're ready to hear all that great talent that you have for us tonight.
Thank you very much. I've got a little story to tell you, and I feel sorry for you if you don't like the story, but I'll keep it short. Last year, I had a student that came to me and said that she wanted to write a piece for the band. Okay, great. I don't know how this is gonna turn out, but fantastic, go for it. A month goes by, two months go by, and I keep asking her, "Do I need to write this?" She gives me the piece. And it's a melody, and I have to write some other instruments, and I'm like, "Wow, this is great." How do the other students like it? And this year, a student came to me in September and said, "I want to do a tune." Great. Long story short, I now have six. One does one, and I have two, another one, and another one. I have six tunes. We're going to feature three of them from our students. One is written by Grace Taylor. Laura Dunko. She didn't say anything, she just gave you a piece of paper and it was done. Okay, this is fantastic. And then, another student whose name I never say in cold, but I will say it now, Madeline Barcato. This first one is by Laura Dunko. It's called Flower Patches. It's great. The orbit's pretty constant. This next one's entitled Sippin' the Song. It's written by Madeline Barcato. It's the first tune I had written down, and it has two speeds. It starts slow, gets loud, and then it's slow again, because Madeline insisted on having a certain kind of rhythm that the band has never seen before. I made it larger, and it sounds fantastic. So, this is called Sippin' the Song. Before we go to the last one, I just wanted to say that I know our students are excited to be here, and we are always grateful to have the chance to perform for residents. This is great for us, and thank the board for having us. Thank you very much for coming and listening. Appreciate it. Well, this is entitled Sun Chatter. It's by Grace Taylor. Welcome to Stony Brook School, Chris Ray.
Just before we resume our meeting, I'd like to congratulate all of you on a wonderful performance. And the board really wants to see the talents that our students have, and I think you guys really kicked us off in a great way. So, we're hoping that we'll see many more of our students come through. I hope they perform as well as you've set very high standards, both with your composition and your playing, and thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it greatly. Thank you. You guys did a wonderful presentation. So, we have a second presentation tonight, and I'm going to yield to Dr. Tanamiyan to introduce our presenters.
Hey, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the representatives from our Learzy Think Tank, who volunteered to come out tonight and share their thoughts about the experience, to come on up. I know Sue is here, Sue Andrews, Suzanne Pollak, Michelle. Thank you very much. This is your time. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Cortez. What else do you need to know?
Your time's up. Thanks, Michelle.
How much time do I have? I have a little bit of time. We're going to get to work. Okay. So, Dawn Marchese is not here tonight. She had a death in the family, but she gave me her words, so I'll read Dawn Marchese's first. Dawn Marchese's Research Program, grades two and three, Virchwood School. Dawn says, "I am sorry I could not attend this evening, but I did want to share my thoughts. Being a part of this year's Think Tank was a positive experience. Dr. T. listened to every educator and made sure to take notes of both the pros and cons of what was being discussed and debated. There were absolutely debates about many issues, and we were graciously allowed to bring our voices to an open forum to establish an atmosphere, I'm sorry, to share our thoughts and ideas. It was enlightening to listen to others' viewpoints and to immediately establish an atmosphere of trust in our room. There were many thoughts and concerns about our past and future practices. Not everyone was always on the same page, but we did show respect, even if we did not always agree. Moving forward, I am personally excited to start something new. Being a special education teacher does leave me with many questions, but I have been afforded a chance to discuss these questions with our administration, and I do feel we are moving in a positive direction. My biggest concern was in following what can be a scripted program and way of teaching that does not always allow autonomy, but I have been assured that this will not be the case. This alleviated my fears, as I do believe every educator has something unique to bring to the table, and there are massive amounts of creativity that should not be extinguished. I was very relieved to hear that our future reading program would not be scripted in this way. My biggest hope is that we will have more consistency between the schools, more of a common language, as well as common assessments in reading instruction, and still be able to fully and enthusiastically engage our children. I do believe that a reading workshop model will be beneficial, and even more beneficial once we have a curriculum to follow and personally expand upon. I especially love the idea of expanding language arts to a full 120 minutes, as I feel this is crucial, this is crucial in implementing a readers' workshop model. Thank you for including me in this venture, and have a wonderful night. Dawn Marchese." Michelle Cortez. I am a parent of six children, two in the elementary school, one in middle school, and two in the high school, one in college. I work part-time here at Copeland Middle School as a reading specialist, not tenure-track, so I have nothing to lose. I fight for the kids. I hope that shows through what I say. I hope that it's not biased either way. My personal experience with the Think Tank, and sorry for reading, it's very soft reading. It was an excellent opportunity to hear the passionate views of educators in the district. It was refreshing to hear their desire to improve educational outcomes for students. I was and still am excited to have meaningful conversations about literacy. My contributions: With the support of Dr. Tanamiyan and eight other members of the Literacy Think Tank, I developed a definition of literacy, which may be used in whole or in part in future in some capacity. I believe the act of defining literacy is important, and so if the definition is never used, which it probably will never be used, it's never distributed or printed, I believe the very acts of investigating literacy, valuing literacy, and cultivating literacy are powerful. Here's my definition, and I tried to keep it forward-thinking and include a diversity of students. I think it's a reading. Is that okay? I'm back to reading. I'm kind of excited. I think it includes the district, and I like it. So, these are the people who responded from our district. They responded with their definitions of literacy. And I highlighted the parts that kind of matched in those definitions. As you'll see from the beginning, they're very simple, and they get progressively more complex toward a critical view of literacy. So, the definition I came up with, which I think is pretty just and fair and actually kind of loving. Literacy is a development of language which enables humans to represent, communicate, and share an almost limitless body of information, including ideas, thoughts, and emotions. Literacy is a process that requires continuous practice and refinement to construct and derive meaning. Literacy is a way of knowing that is represented by organized living systems designed and used to perceive, convey, and reveal human intelligences. Such systems include reading and writing, and extend from listening, speaking, and thinking. We value literacy for its transformative power to create and impart meaningful communication in our lives. All human beings are intrinsically valuable and capable of acquiring literacy skills as a means of communication to share, learn, and understand the world around them. We cultivate literacy by honoring human perception and interaction in a society that celebrates diversity, validates curiosity, and appreciates the relationship between knowledge and understanding. As a member of the Assessment and Standards Committee, I took part in researching instructional shifts in the standards and making recommendations for the focus on formative assessment. I have a document entitled Assessment and Standards Committee Formative Assessment Focus, and in that I access information from the International Literacy Association to take an identification focus or a prevention focus. I've shared that with Dr. Tanamiyan and with the group. Part of the work of the Assessment and Standards Committee was to highlight and summarize some ideas, from McTyre Wiggins to support curricular instruction. Some of these included reading the standards carefully, acknowledging that standards are not curriculum. Standards should be unpacked into categories such as long-term goals, overarching understandings, essential questions, and curriculum embedded texts. All of these have to do with knowledge, understanding, application, engagement, relevance, and authenticity. A curriculum should be backwards mapped to clarify end goals. These are some of the things we talked about in our meetings. One thing that I noticed in the Student Learning Standards that are highlighted and that I brought to the meeting, although it may not have been popular, were that process writing. The process writing approach has been in the standards from grades K through 12, and has been highlighted as a necessary part of an educational career for a student. So, that's one of the things that I thought was very important. Upon further examination, the standards highlight conventional accuracy and literacy expression, namely speaking and writing. I have concerns about whole-word memorization that may be relied upon to teach high-frequency and sight words, as evidenced in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for English Language Arts Kindergarten. So, when a teacher reads that the sight words or the high-frequency words ought to be known and memorized in grade K, but those same high-frequency words are not brought up in one, two, three, four, then sometimes a kindergarten teacher will assume that they all have to be known and memorized at that early age. And when you're just reading the high-frequency words and memorizing the whole words, sometimes there's a breakdown in the later grades because the children don't know them fully and completely, not having written them or orally spoken them a multitude of times over a multitude of years. That's one of my concerns. I can't say that my concerns were shared with everyone. There were two closing directives given to the Assessment and Standards Committee. One was to envision a best-in-class approach to formative assessment for an elementary literacy program. Again, my ideas were not perfectly shared by everyone, but I did share them at the time, and I still think they're valid and important. One of them is written expression in all parts, and I want to bore you with all the details of why I think written expression is a very good way of assessing a student. It helps us to build a portfolio for the student, gives us an accurate record of where their memory is, where their sequencing skills lie, and it's a perfect map of orthographic skills. Another way was speaking and oral expression. I believe that's also important for highlighting retention, showing what retention the students have. Our final directive was to begin to name the key instructional shifts required by the Student Learning Standards for ELA, English Language Arts. One of them is complex content. Our students are seeing more and more complex content, which means that we need to be supporting those students every step of the way. Using evidence from the text, that's another thing that students need to develop their logic and reasoning for, and the teachers have to support them in those initiatives because logic and reasoning are higher-level thinking skills. Building on prior knowledge, that means making connections with the text. Those three instructional shifts highlight the importance of increasing classroom support for students through modeling, explicit instruction, and building both receptive and expressive literacy skills. My takeaways: Being part of the Literacy Think Tank has helped me in my role as literacy specialist in applying meaningful literacy interventions here at Copeland, using skills-based criteria, and building portfolios for students to be used to make instructional decisions. I also learned that Rockaway Township teachers are passionate about the social, emotional, emotional, and behavioral health and well-being of their students. Playtime, reflection time, and rest time have been noted as necessary components in life and learning. I learned that teachers have concerns about investing money and time on new programs. I learned that teachers would like to lead students with energy, vitality, individual creativity, and to be professionally supported in the hard work that they do to fulfill rigorous standards and expectations. I wonder if we are all doing what we can to hold our students accountable for conventional literacy expression. My worries, and then I'll get to the hopes at the end, so it is gonna end in a positive note. My worries: I worry that our students will view education as a burden and not a blessing. I worry that our students will not know how to achieve balance in their lives through language and literacy. I worry that many of our students will be overexposed to screens. Because of this exposure, I worry that they will feel isolated and alone unless they learn the communicative power that both language and literacy hold. I worry that our students will not realize that they can. Last part, my hopes: I hope the district will value and support both a structured, direct, explicit, and balanced, constructivist literacy approach. I hope that all language and literacy skills are valued, including the following: Reading, written expression, listening, speaking, and thinking. I hope that the New Jersey Student Learning Standards are used with long-term education in mind and the development of the whole student. My hope is that we can develop strong assessments to determine if student performance is the result of adequate instruction or student ability or disability. My hope is that our teachers of literacy are equipped with the tools they need to instruct learners. My hope is that we can value the strength of a unified expectancy points for reading, spelling, writing, and handwriting, and support students in accurate, conventional spelling to ensure the efficacy and retention of the curricular content. My hope is that we move away from whole-word memorization. My hope is that we value the receptive and expressive processes of reading, writing, speaking, listening, and thinking equally. My hope is that every student has the opportunity to know the fullness of language, literacy, and learning. My hope is that our students and teachers feel supported in striving to reach their full potentials. And the last one, my hope is that we can be positive and humble in our work so that we can show students that we love to learn and that it's good to have conversations and to support one another. Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Pollak. I've been a Resource Center teacher in the district for more years than I need to go over, and I've taught first through the degree, and has gone both pulling through for a level of instruction to the total replacement instruction in my Resource Center, and then also collaboratively teaching with general ed teachers. One of the things that I can do very both impressed about is that in providing a forum for a lot of our professionals to come together, it is so gratifying and so overwhelming to look at the level of knowledge, to look at the level of professionalism, to look at the level of care that is part and parcel of some of our Rockaway Township staff. We're provided with much needed forum to be able to group together, knowing our expertise, in an environment where we would really encourage to listen to one another. But you realize as you're doing that, again, it's just the wealth of resources that the district has in terms of its professionals. Many of us, positive opportunities in the committee, also volunteered a lot of our time outside of the meeting time, in addition to all that other time we spent outside of our less remote inner jobs, because of our commitment to the kids and our commitment to continue this journey to improve reading instruction. Our particular task in the district is, and I represent that, was to specifically look at intervention, to look at what happens to the students who maybe need a little bit more. As a Resource Center teacher, I generally get children at a different stage of the process. Very often, after other interventions have been tried and after, they have now fallen more than a year ago. We wanted to look at that area of what happens to our general ed population as they start to struggle early on. And there was a lot already in place, both in terms of identifying the children who were at risk, starting from kindergarten, and then tracking their progress as different interventions were implemented.
Hi, I'm Sue Andrews. Part of what, there were twelve of us on the intervention committee, and we met three additional times in addition to the four Think Tank committee meetings. So, and what we all did is we would have, we all have friends that teach in our district, so we reached out to find out what other districts and the teachers did and did not, and what they know, what they do, and what works, what doesn't work. And we kept cycling back to things that we already had. So, what we did, we put a map together of some of the things that we used to do, as far as assessing to identify the students that should be in academic intervention, and we needed a few more things in. And we did put up a list, a nice little hierarchy, that we turned into Dr. Tanamiyan, who was continuing to find, to make a comment, Matrix. I've heard of Matrix, so it all flows very nicely. It will continue to evolve, but to piggyback on what Suzanne said, what really impressed me is the depth of experience and expertise of the staff that we already have here at Rockaway Station. The knowledge and the passion that was exhibited at those meetings. I think Peter went through two legal pads, taking good notes of everything that was said during those four meetings. Twenty-nine people in that room who all want the best for our students. So, we have a lot in place. We have a journey yet to go, and this is a personal opportunity to give back to the best for our students.
And I think that what was really impressive at the local grade with is that there are times, whether or not we hold in the group, and yet we had, and yet there was work where all of us had the opportunity to share our thoughts about X, our thoughts about Y, and pros and cons, and that kind of discussion really is what led us to come up with a good retake on what we're already doing. Our hope is that we will find a good opportunity to continue this kind of discussion from the perspective of a special education teacher, as a dyslexic specialist, and one in general education. It's with many voices that continue that we can really do the best for our kids, and we are so committed to doing that. So, thank you. So thank you.
If I could just could, I want to just, a special nod to Suzanne, Michelle. Thank you very much for coming forward tonight and sharing your experiences. And if I could also just make a commitment back to all of you, how much I've learned from being part of the think tank. And my commitment is that the forms may change, but the mindset, the mindset of collaboration, listening, and deliberating, our journey is going to be a constant in the work that we're going to do going forward. And so it's not going to be all about getting everyone to a full agreement, but by being fully engaged and honestly delivering very complex issues, I think is going to make us continually smarter. And I couldn't agree more with the comments that were made tonight about the quality and the expertise that we have here in the district. I was purely blown away each of those four meetings by the engagement and the level of expertise in the room. And so it really is our greatest asset, and we are at the beginning of a very exciting journey. So I'm honored to be honored with all of you. Thank you.
Hey, it's a very special occasion also, while we're in the presentation mode, to take a moment to both celebrate and acknowledge the agreement that occurred between the board and the R T E A in reaching a negotiated settlement that was the result of a lot of hard work on both ends. People who certainly saw the value in perspectives, each other's perspectives, and worked as a team to get it done. And I'm sure, as you've been watching the news lately from Los Angeles and today in Denver, these are not easy processes. So tonight, we did want to celebrate this. It's a very positive event. We have contracts here ready to be signed, and we invite the representatives from the R T E A and our board president to come forward and to sign these documents and to kick us off into our next step of the journey.
As stated at a previous board meeting when the settlement did occur, thank you very much. And I'm glad we were able to get this done and keep moving forward. So our, our thanks to everyone. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion, please, to open the meeting to the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks, second. Mrs. Charakow. No. Is there anyone from the board, uh, for anybody from the public who wishes to address the board at this time?
Tara, is that 49 Marlene Drive? It's a little weird being on the side. And I was, I mean, to attend the first meeting of the new year, but I did want to congratulate the new board members, Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Shields. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Salming, Mrs. Tarako. Leadership is so important, especially in this time in our town. So I appreciate that the new leadership that certainly I've worked with for over six years are very strong, and I really appreciate that they were voted in the capacity that they were. So congratulations, and I wish this new board the best of luck. And one other thing, while I was going through all my binders, which I've already given to Mrs. DeCarlo, I found an item called Reading and Understanding the Report, the board secretary. This was a very useful and helpful tool, so I'll give it back to you. And then maybe you can disseminate to the other board members. But especially since budget season is coming up again, it was extremely helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? If not, may I have a motion, please, opposed to the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks, second. Mrs. Shields. Moving on to communications. Mrs. DeCarlo.
Yes, I did receive one item since the last board meeting. An email yesterday from Nancy Patterson regarding the resignation of Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, so moved. Moving on then to approve the minutes of January 2nd, 2019. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Charakow. Board discussion? If not, roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks, yes. Mrs. Charakow?
Yes.
Mrs. Elber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salming?
Yes.
Superintendent's report, Dr. McGough.
Thank you. This past week has been one of great significance and importance as we mark on our first steps along new roads to literacy instruction for our elementary students. We take confidence in making that journey as an educational team, informed and in concert with our dedicated teachers. Dr. Tunamian will provide more detailed information in his report this evening about the exciting events of this week and a preview of what awaits. In keeping with our district mission to infuse cutting-edge technology into all facets of our operations, I am happy to share that commencing with this year's kindergarten registration, we will use the Genesis Paperless Program. Although this may not totally eliminate the in-person portion of registration, it should drastically reduce the activity that occurs during that visit. And this should provide a major convenience for our parents and also assist in decreasing time that is involved in the registration process. Through our current partnership with Genesis, there will be no additional costs for this program addition. Further details will be provided for parents of prospective new students in the upcoming weeks ahead. Representatives from Central Middle School in Parsippany attended C M S this past Wednesday to review our process for character programming. And we are proud that Copland Middle School's efforts in the area of character education are winning the attention of others in the educational community. Summer planning is underway this summer, special education extended school year, and all summer enrichment programs will take place at Stony Brook School and at Copland Middle School. Stay tuned for information regarding enrichment sign-ups, which will be announced during the month of February. On tonight's agenda, I would like to note with particular enthusiasm the acceptance of two grants from the Rockaway Township Educational Foundation. And we have representatives of our, our executive board here with us tonight. I'd like to personally thank them for their support and their partnership. One grant will fund the beginning of a maker space at Burchwood School with the purchase of a 3D printer. And the other will provide funding for 10 Lego education simple machines at D B O. These kits will provide a hands-on learning experience and a deeper understanding of engineering concepts that are covered in third grade force and motion. These are truly meaningful efforts spurred by our own staff to move our students into 21st century skill-building and knowledge. And I thank again the R T E A for their valuable partnership and their willingness to support new ideas and approaches on behalf of our students. In the area of communication, I would like to again thank those in the school community who responded to our invitation to share any difficulties, concerns, or ideas relative to our new website. I believe that the vast majority, if not all, of those issues that have been reported to our instructional technology department have been addressed and resolved. And I cannot say emphatically enough that the leadership team of our school district holds open an invitation to contact us whenever a member of our school community has a question, a concern, or an idea. Please never hesitate. We are acutely aware of how important it is to address issues and to give information in a timely and in an accurate manner, and that we see that as among our very highest priorities. If you are not already a regular visitor to our district's social media presence, please make use of the district's Facebook, district Twitter, and the district app for reliable and official information. And in the vein of communication, I would also like to share that our next open parent-community forum is on March 13th. But please do not feel that you need to wait until that time to share something that's on your mind. Again, we invite calls, emails, or visits with the knowledge that ongoing and open dialogue is the sign of a truly healthy school district. Next, Inspector's report.
You. Mrs. Inspector's report?
Good evening. Our telephone project is nearing completion. Phones have been placed at all locations. Dwyer will be cut over on January 29th and will have a full day of training and support on the 30th. Central office has a tentative date of January 31st for the cut over and February 1st for the training and support. We are currently in talks with all teams to see how we can get voicemail for every teacher. Although there are still items that need attention, such as problems with extension numbers and phones ringing at incorrect locations, please be assured that Ed in our I T department has been addressing all items as quickly as possible. Stony Brook got off to a chilly start yesterday with eventually six classrooms that had no heat. At first, it was thought that only the extreme cold made the pipes and unit ventilators crack and break. It was eventually discovered that the company that is doing the installation had to turn the system off on Monday when there were no students in the building to balance and test the system and forgot to turn the controls back on after the little finish, which would have reactivated the pumps. By 8:00 P M last night, everything was back in working order. Since this is still an open project, the company that installed it will be replacing the damaged parts with new rather than just fix what is there. The architect will be on site after dismissal today to inspect the repairs, and we will be doing a walkthrough on Monday to get the final punch list in place. I did receive an email from the architect at 4:30 this afternoon confirming that he was on site, examined the repairs, and did not see any evidence of leaks. He also confirmed that the six classrooms in question were now fully heated. There will be four large storage trailers dropped off at Stony Brook by February 1st, which will hold the replacement windows. We still do not have a firm start date for that project. We will be bidding out the Albright and Party Lot project at the end of February or the very beginning of March and hope to award the project in April. And we in the business office have been busy working on the budget and gathering all items needed for Q seven review in March. And that concludes my report.
I was remiss. Any questions for Mrs. DeCarlo? We'll start there first, based on her report. I have one. Was there any damage to those rooms?
No, we were lucky.
So no damage whatsoever. Thank you. And then if I could just revert back to Dr. McGough's report. Any questions for Dr. McGough, honey? My apologies for forgetting that. Okay, then. Correctum up, report.
Okay, good evening. I hope everyone is well and was able to stay warm during our mini Arctic freeze this past week. I would like to begin my comments by thanking the members of our literacy think tank that came forward to speak about their experiences this evening. Their engagement with this work has been an invaluable and, as I've noted in past reports, extremely important part of the work that we've been doing. Our deliberation and discussion about our approach and the resources with our K-5 Balanced Literacy Program will continue, and feedback from our teachers will always be valued. The journey continues. I would like to provide the community with an update about the launch of Balanced Literacy in our elementary schools. On January 9th, we introduced our teachers to our Sustainable Professional Development Plan and the instructional coach they will be working with to learn about how to implement Balanced Literacy in their classrooms. Overall, the feedback data continues to be positive. Over 80% of participants agreed or strongly agreed they were satisfied with their session. They had sufficient time for learning and reflection, and that the day was planned with an, and interactive, well-planned and interactive. I also introduced a new question in our feedback survey this time to gather feedback about the extent the P D is seen by teachers as aligned with our district's goals and priorities. I'm thrilled to report 93% of participants agreed and strongly agreed there was a clear connection with the content and district goals. I think this is a very important data point because I believe the more our teachers experience a coherent and consistent vision for Balanced Literacy, the more likely they will begin to feel confident and prepared to implement consistent practices across all of our elementary schools. I'll be sure to track this data point after future P D sessions going forward. I am also pleased to report we hosted our first coaching visit for a group of our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers last Friday at Burchwood. The visit included teachers from Burchwood, D B O, and Dwyer. The visit went smoothly, but required a lot of logistical planning before the visit. I would like to acknowledge all of our elementary principals for this planning and how they did that so well in terms of modifying their schedules, then, which made for, to ensure such a smooth experience for our teachers and coach. I would also like to thank our teachers for their flexibility and understanding about the modified schedules and travel while also being fully engaged with the work during the coaching visit. This coach visit focused on the skills of an effective mini lesson. The coaching model, the mini lesson, and the debrief afterward with the teachers were about the traits of an effective mini lesson. For example, time was spent discussing the importance of the mini lesson not being longer than eight to 12 minutes, and how a mini lesson should be direct in terms of instruction, modeling about one specific reading strategy. We will host our first round of coaching for a group of kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers this Thursday, tomorrow, at Stony Brook. The second round of coaching visits will center on the skill of conferencing. I would like to highlight the resolution to adopt our K-8 Physical Education Health Curriculum this evening. One important change that will take effect in September is the integration of the LEED Substance Abuse Curriculum with our health curriculum in grades five, six, and seven. This will replace the DARE program during the 2019 This will replace the DARE program during the 2019-2020 school year and create a logical sequence from grades 5, 6, and 7 about this critical topic that will connect nicely with the wonderful work the Meniscal Alliance does in this area for all of our 8th graders. We are also officially adopting our new biology curriculum this evening. This curriculum was written in close consultation with our high school districts to ensure it is preparing our students with the end of year exam in mind. We are currently offering two 8th grade biology classes here at Copeland. Picking up on the theme of summer planning, I am pleased to note the board agenda includes a new job description for a supervisory summer school program. This job description creates a position where one person will oversee the design, registration, implementation, and supervision of our summer school programs. I believe the inclusion of this position will improve the communication between our summer school programs and the community by having one person coordinate all of these activities. It is also worth noting this position was created by collapsing other positions that were focused on the oversight of just certain summer school programs and not others. Those positions will not be posted. Lastly, I'm pleased to announce we will be hosting an evening of science on February 13th for 4th grade families at Copeland Middle School from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. I encourage families to join us for an evening of science and learning with their child. We are launching this experience to gauge community interest in these types of activities. In the past, the district's hosted a variety of these types of events. A flyer will be sent out to our 4th grade families later this week, and we will have room for 25 families to participate. Mrs. Parisi and Mrs. Waxman will be the instructors. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Turner?
Oh, I do. I have some questions for specifically about Balanced Literacy approach. Is there any evidence for the value with students with learning?
There is. When we talk about Balanced Literacy approach, if I could spend a couple minutes saying a bit more specific of what that means. So when we think about Balanced Literacy across 120-minute instructional block, we're talking about ensuring that we're balancing time for instruction around strategy and skill, as well as direct instruction around phonics instruction, and then we also have a balanced time for writing, all encompassed into that literacy block. The other key component of Balanced Literacy is that it keeps the students' interest and skills at the center of the classroom. It's highly differentiated. So students who may be below, let's say, grade level, at grade level, or above grade level are positioned in a way to drive their learning. So because it's a highly differentiated model, it is structured to ensure that all students are engaged at the appropriate learning level. There are also other assessments, data that drives the instruction, that ensures the level instruction is meant to meet the students at the appropriate instructional level.
Okay, so the assessments that are referring to the data collection, will that be occurring during that on our time?
It will. The vision, to be candid for the community, about how we'll be working to have more formative assessments implemented, you heard Michelle earlier tonight in her comments, talk about the importance of high-quality formative assessments. Our vision is a year from now to be moving to the Fonsis-Pinnell running record. That is an assessment that's proven time and time again to not only provide high-quality informative data about a student's skill level, but, and this is the important part, it connects nicely to providing teachers with guidance around instructional decisions for students at specific levels. But as you may have noted, that's a year from now, so you'd be right to ask me, well, what are we doing in September when we have students in front of us? We are in the process of creating a professional development plan to ensure that we can administer the DIBELS in our elementary grades as a universal screening tool that will provide our teachers in the beginning of the school year, midway, midpoint of the school year and beyond, with the information they need to match students at the appropriate level in terms of instruction and resources. The reason you may be wondering, why don't we just start with Fonsis-Pinnell in September? It's a big lift, and we have to be strategic about what we ask our teachers to do and how much we're asking of them in terms of change management, in terms of their own learning. And so our priority on September and our priority right now is to focus on the skills of reading instruction and high-quality reading instruction. We think that's going to take some time, and the other priority is to provide them with high-quality curriculum materials aligned to that instruction by this spring. And then, as I've alluded to in other reports, the other key lift here is a voluntary summer institute that will be offered to our teachers in June, and then ongoing job-invented coaching in September. And there's still one other piece, if I could share, and I mentioned in response to your first question about the Balanced Literacy definition, that there needs to be clear and consistent program for phonics instruction. And what we've messaged and what we've talked about making commitment to is bringing into program all foundations. That also requires some training and requires ongoing training. And so I'm in the process now of developing a plan for what that would look like to ensure that that is also job-invented training and coaching. That is a highly structured, finance-based program that will be a foundation upon which we will build. I will share in full transparency, it is a program that we will deliberate throughout the year on its quality and in its implementation with the expertise that you saw here tonight and that will also refer here tonight, that will make that program as smart as we possibly can.
Now, is Foundations a Wilson-based program?
It's a Wilson-based program. It's not traditionally an OG-based program. And we will continue to expand, however, within our district our OG resources for those that need it. The idea being, we're of the mind that while OG is very much a well-researched and well-proven effective method for teaching students phonics, how to develop as readers and specifically the phonics skills, especially for those that struggle, we also need to recognize not all students struggle and not all students need OG. And our starting point is provide all of our general education students, all of our students, with a structured phonics program. I'm of the mind the Foundations program from Wilson meets that standard and have very smart early progressive monitoring assessments in place to identify students early on who need OG. And then we have a variety of different resources to bring the Orton-Gillingham strategies to bear in our elementary schools.
Okay, so there are different approaches, phonics instruction, they're not synonymous or interchangeable, so would it not make more sense to pick a program like Foundations that is OG-based because using our RTI model that we're going to be implementing, the third tier, if I remember correctly, is OG?
Correct, but to my earlier comment, I'm not of the mind that every student needs a tier-three intervention.
Right.
So by having the Foundations as our foundational program, it's a multi-sensory approach similar to OG, just not as structured, not as layered, if you would, as an OG-type approach is. What we really want to be aggressive about doing is identifying as early as possible the students who will respond better to that more structured approach and provide that to them as early and often as possible with frequent progress monitoring.
Okay, so is there a program like Foundations that is born-based, not Wilson-based? That's my point.
You may be referring to Project REED, which is an OG-based program, has a long legacy here in our district. We have a wonderful trainer here in our district, and it's been implemented to different degrees over the years. Part of my onboarding process with the district and my listening tour and my constant understanding history of the district is to understand the different ways Project REED has been implemented in the district. And it's been inconsistent, candidly. One of the themes that's came across in the listening tour I did from our teachers and candidly, one of the themes that came out from our very first ThinkTec meeting was teachers want inconsistency. They wanted a fresh start, candidly, and they wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. And so the expertise of Project REED that's currently in our district is not going to go away. It will be continued value, but it needs to be more clearly defined in terms of when and where it sits, in terms of a tier-two intervention or a tier-three intervention, but not necessarily for all kids as a tier-one core program.
Say that we go with the Foundations then, is there something in place to evaluate something that's likely to look different in one classroom to the next using a Balanced Literacy approach?
Evaluate the program?
The overall program. So obviously, Foundations has assessments that are built into that.
Sure, sure.
But if we're using a Balanced Literacy approach, then that could likely look different. And fidelity of delivery is essential for intervention?
It is.
Evaluation, how are we going to establish fidelity is open to, you know, interpretation by those who are involved.
Well, it's not so much as open interpretation, I hope, as implement it. There's going to be, so we'll have significant different data points throughout the first year and every year to monitor the implementation and to see where our data is being tracked in terms of how students are responding to it. But there's also other ways to get to consistency. One of the most effective, from my perspective, is collaboration. One of the most significant things I think we did this year was implement grade group meetings across our kindergarten 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th grade levels. Those grade group meetings are going to become even more critical next year because our teachers are going to be in a new learning space, and they're going to need to get together and talk about how they're experiencing the new program. The other layer is supervision and support. So baked into our current professional development plan is professional development for our school leaders. Our school leaders are partners in this work and partners with our teachers. So ensuring our teachers are receiving consistent feedback from school leaders across buildings aligned to a consistent vision is also a critical way to not only support our teachers but to ensure that we are moving towards that consistency. Where we need to be careful, candidly, is that we don't, for the sake of consistency, fall into a mindset of compliance. If this becomes an exercise where we all need to be the same and it starts to feel like a box, that is not going to empower us to implement a robust Balanced Literacy program, and frankly, it's going to demoralize our teachers. So consistency from the perspective of collaboration and supervision and ongoing deliberation and dialogue, yes. Consistency from the perspective of checklist and everyone's doing this on the same day lockstep, no. So I just want to be clear.
Okay, so one of my concerns is that decoding is one of those lower-order skills that kids have to be able to call on strategy when they're learning heavily. Some children obviously come naturally to, some need explicit instruction. And if they're not getting it in those very early grades and we're waiting to catch them when it seems like they're going through the sifter, that's one of my concerns with the Balanced Literacy approach because that's something, but I think whether or not we want everybody in lockstep doing the same thing in the same classroom, we don't want a factory here. But I think there are some things that need to be taught at certain points.
I'm excited to hear you say that. I agree with you. And it was not my intent to in any way communicate a vision of catching or being reactive. In fact, we had several conversations in the literacy think tank about we need to be proactive, and we need to put these robust resources in place so that we're being more proactive than we've historically been. And we're giving our teachers a stronger starting point in the teaching of phonics by getting everyone on the same page with Foundations, getting that high-quality professional development place, and then having the progress monitoring data. So that's why I did highlight the DIBELS. By having that in place and screening early on, we're being more proactive as opposed to react.
Okay, and you're saying that we already have Project REED, obviously. Would it not be more effective since people already know that and may not be instituted the same way in the same classroom, maybe even the same school? But perhaps if we stayed with that?
It's not from my experiences that we have universal adoption of Project REED presently over in the case, and so it's not a situation where it's something that everyone's already knowing and everyone's already doing. It's happened in pockets, it's been implemented inconsistently over the years, and what we do have, what our greatest asset is, is we have some real experts with that who are currently working mostly in our academic intervention space. And those experts are people I continue to consult regularly and will continue to be close at the table as we go forward. But I am of the mind, based on deliberations I've experienced here, that what is needed is a fresh start and a new program to come in that is meant for our general education core program and to make sure that program is dovetailed well with an intervention strategy and ensures we have the OG resources for those that need it. Not everyone needs it.
So just to recap then, so what will that RTI model look like with Foundations as a general head delivery to OG and my students tier-three? What's happening in that?
Well, I don't necessarily see a middle. I see a tier-two. And the tier-two is where you're either having a push-in intervention or pull-out intervention happening. And candidly, what that intervention looks like to be done best needs to be determined by the student and what the student's needs are. So I don't think we would serve our teachers well for to say you can only use this, you can only use that. What we want to do is ensure our teachers have robust data and robust resources and a robust toolkit to pull from, which is why we have our Project REED teachers in that space, because not only do they have the Project REED toolkit to pull from, but then that will have additional resources to pull from as well, based on the data they're seeing about those students.
Okay, I look forward to hearing you say that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on then to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
I just want to schedule some.
Okay, let's start there.
Okay.
This is for operations?
This is for operations. So first, Mrs. DeCarlo was like to meet potentially once a month, correct? If we could be consistent dating time, would that be helpful or?
Yeah, I mean, unless, do you want once a month? We could go a little sooner.
Well, I think if we do it once a month, we can keep it a little shorter, and then we can, I would like to, as you mentioned as well, bring in some of these departments, and I would like to see technology come in so we can talk about some of our tech feedback and things that we need to be moving toward. I know transportation, those type of things. It's nice to have those individual commentaries to give them the answer. People too also, because shortening and having more frequency, I think we can get more accomplished based around the quality of the learning. But that is. The budget would certainly occupy a lot of the time, so. So I've brought some dates to the committee. Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Cherco, you are on my committee. Are there any particular days that will be better for you?
Tuesdays and Thursdays are available anytime. Monday and Wednesdays are only against the five. Mondays are tricky.
So given that, do you want to suggest some dates to amend through email, get consensus or do you want it now?
Sure, let's just try to do like this one on. Do you want to try to be next week?
Have you ever tried to, first of all?
Thursday, there's a school board meeting, but I don't know if we'll have a board back.
You were saying? I'll give you a textbook.
Can we have questionings?
No.
Question 31st?
30th. We can't have questionings on the 31st. I have 30, I can't say it real quick. We'll have a team that texts what I think.
Try another one.
If I have them down to 30, I have, and they, if you have your. Would it be possible to have it, tell me another week out, February 7th, to have our first one?
Week of the fourth? The 7th?
Second problem.
So we'll just push it to that, right?
Do we have a meeting for that?
Thursday.
Thursday is 7th? And that could potentially be the first Thursday of every month, guys, virtually every month, so tentatively, what time can you be there?
I just, 6:00 is most comfortable.
Mr. Charle, 3:00 6:00 AM?
Yes.
And then we can see if we are so deep there for, for the language, technique, first, so we can go across the country, the whole points, specifically the front. We'll just take the seventh. And then after that meeting, please let us know what you officially decide as to meeting dates. The more we can set up going forward, the better. You know, we have some committees over here. Okay. And then just one quick note, sorry, just one quick note, I just wanted to confirm again, also now that Mrs. Cherco is officially on operations, she's going to continue to sign the invoices. Anyone, everyone is always welcome to join her. Just let me know if you check the dates. So Cherco can do a bit of consistency in that, if she sees the month to month. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, education committee, correct? Okay. Okay.
First, I want to thank those that came out to share their experience from the think tank, the personal experiences and concerns. I'm very excited to see this process unfold, and based on the testimony I've heard today, I'm very inspired by what I've seen. In our last meeting on. In our last meeting on January 8th, we had several curriculum presentations. One was for the biology and Stephanie Frost from the middle school presented, she wrote that curriculum. I have to say that the biology curriculum is very rigorous and it's aligned with the high school. This course sets the students up to take the AP courses in the high school. And we're currently have, we currently have 27 in the course right now. For L and P E, we had Corey Lozzi do the health for K5. And she incorporated lead into the fifth grade and some of the order was changed in order to better the needs of the students. Brett Zinberg was our P E for K5 and he emphasized building skills so that students could use those in game play. And Caitlin Stasi worked on the health and P E for 6D. And in sixth and seventh grade was the focus on fitness and adding lead into the curriculum. And in eighth grade, the focus was on stress and nutrition. I recommend on the agenda, the resolutions between the phys ed, health, and the biology curriculum. And I'm looking forward to the science day. I have a fourth grade parent, so I'm excited about that. And our next meeting, the curriculum meeting, is on February 12th. That was scheduled in our last meeting.
I think, was it now going to be the second Tuesday for trying to at least drive?
I wasn't sure exactly when we decided, but I just knew that that was the 12th.
Yes. Also trying to set these up. So second Tuesday of every month, then I'd be beginning then at 4:00 PM, is that where we start?
Yes. Yes.
Questions for Career Education Committee? Not any other committees?
From the Lozzi Committee. One thing I'd like to start off with, since we're already talking about families, maybe if anybody has them out, is to set the next meeting.
Okay, so what we have to do is dovetailing with education. If that continues to be okay, then we would, for every second Tuesday, we would meet at 5:00 o'clock following the 4:00 clock.
That's fine. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Easy for you.
Very good.
Considering this is my first time sharing, am I supposed to go with the policies now initially? Wait, wait until we have the first meeting. Unless this is a general statement you wish to make or anything.
Okay, that's right.
They will hold off on your report. I believe we have another report?
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending the Rockaway Township Ed Foundation meeting that occurred recently on the 17th. And I got to experience the approval of the Makerspace Grant as well as the Lego Education Symbol Machines Grant as well. We do have an update regarding the Therapy Dogs Project. Recently, the live animals policy was approved. And now that that policy has been approved, the district is considering moving forward. And I guess the next meeting, excuse me, will be May 9th.
Thank you. There's no other, I believe that covers everything, right? Moving on then, recommended for board action. We'll be looking at personnel first, beginning on page four, ending on page seven. There'll be no public comment or discussion about this by law. So may I have a motion, please?
So move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Roll call when you're ready.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmi?
Yes.
Moving on to HIV determination, please. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Mrs. Cherico, Mrs. Brooks?
Yes, we have, we discussed an executive session to first reviews of HIV's number 22 and 23, both of which were confirmed.
Tonight, we are going to refer HIV cases number, I believe it would be 19, 20, and 21. 19 and 21 is unconfirmed and 20 as confirmed. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmi?
Yes.
Moving on to education, beginning on page eight, ending on page eight. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Mrs. Brooke, Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks. Board discussion?
I would like to just thank the P E department because as the white P E teacher, I'm understanding undertaking that these individuals took on to reiterate all of this.
Anyone else? And as recommended by the Education Committee for approval, those are the curriculums that Mrs. Helberg was referring to. I can open up to the public if anybody wishes to make a comment about education. If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmi?
Yes.
Moving on to special education, there is one item. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Helberg, thank you for raising your hand. Surveys change since here. Board discussion?
Can I make one comment?
Please do.
You'll note that this approves a contract between Dr. Moreno and the Board of Education. As you may recall, we contracted with Rutgers Behavioral Health at the beginning of the year. We've had a wonderful beginning with them, with our counselor. But one, one item that has not yet come to fruition is the part of that contract that consisted of four hours a week of a on-staff psychiatrist. So Rutgers has had difficulty in hiring qualified individual. So we are not being charged for that part of the contract. I just wanted to make that clear that till that time, we're continuing to use outside providers for students who need psychiatric evaluations.
So this is one of many that we have on our ballot that we can use.
Yes.
Thank you. Questions to the board? Discussion? Not, I can open to the public? For items under special education? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmi?
Yes. Moving on to administration, beginning on page nine, ending on page 10. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields?
A motion that we separate number two, auxiliary personnel, the rest of the administration, please. Or second before the vote.
May I add a second on that? That number two will be a separate vote?
Second.
Second, okay, Mrs. Brooks, second. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Very good. Okay, we will separate out number two. Are there any discussion, any discussion to be had on one, two, three, four, or five? I have a question. I guess I can call on myself. Okay, for number three, on the top of page 10. Why are we rescinding funds?
We originally had funds in the correct account lines. So the last meeting, we went to move it to a different account line and realized that we shouldn't just want to.
So now we're just undoing what we did?
Just bringing it right back, really.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? I can.
And number one, the public agency compliance officer, is that something new?
No, no, that's a senior position in school districts.
And is it O C B A?
Yeah. I don't think I've ever seen a district where it wasn't the DAs.
That on your resume. I can open to the public if anybody has any questions on this section. If not, we'll vote on numbers one, three, four, and five first. We're looking at one, three, four, and five. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmi?
Yes.
Now we'll have a roll call vote on number two.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
No.
So what do we? Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmi?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on then to page 10, to finance, beginning on page 10, going to page 12. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
And Mrs. Cherico? And I do want to note here that this is where the Rockaway Township Education Foundation has been so generous to allowing those grants. Would you say anything more?
Well, I, I'll just repeat my thanks. I think it's great to have a part like the foundation, not only to support financially, but to spur us in terms of our funding and to configure our teachers in terms of projects that they would like to put forward. These particular two are very, very exciting because I think they're onrivers of things to come and certainly some ideas that we have in each of our schools. We have real enthusiasm to move our students in areas of coding and engineering and thinking about science at a very early age and in a very different way. So I think that we'll see a lot more come and this is really the gateway to that.
Can we also have requests that as these projects get underway, that we get to see the final products and demonstration and everything? We would love to see that. So thank you so much. You can schedule that. Any board comments about finance? If not, I can open to the public. Not? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmi?
Yes.
Moving on to policy. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Mrs. Cherico?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks, what's that? Sorry, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Mezzet, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. On the agenda for the first read, the following policies, assignment of transfer, dismissal, certification tenure charges, suspension on certification tenure charge. Certification of tenure charges due to inefficiency, withholding an increment, attendance, conflict of interest, dressing grooming, and non-rerod but non-tenure teaching staff member. Policy 3142, which happens to be the non-rerod but non-tenure teaching staff member. One of the things that we discussed was taking out via certified mail and changing from with the previous stage to with the previous. There are minimal changes with some of the other ones. I don't see a good ending in particular. Pretty much it. Second, we have a motion to recreate the following policies for a second read. Abolishing positions, assignment of additional duties, conduct of reduction in force, discipline, examination for cause, code of ethics, consulting outside the district, and student suicide prevention. There are no changes, then these will be approved after affirmative vote.
Board discussion? I do have some questions and I will go first. First one was the certification of tenure charges, 3144. Is there going to be any updates to the red case policy done by administration? I don't think we even had a discussion, actually. We got a long answer on that then. And then also, on page two, when they say state district superintendent. Which one is that? On page two, we say. Okay. State district superintendent, what does that mean for?
You have that? That's interesting lingo and I think that just means superintendent. However, in the day, I think in the particular draft in the law, they utilize that terminology, which is why they're using it here. There is no state superintendent, not referring to the commissioner. So it's a local person, but I believe that Strauss may would like us to keep the word of the law in the policy, even though it's not what we typically use.
The next one was 3144.3. Is this a new policy? Is it from an update or is it superintendent recommendation that we had missing?
You said 3143, doesn't that sound?
3144.3. Going to what end?
Down, yes. This is not a policy that we have, actually.
No, I know, it's a new policy. Is it from an update or is it superintendent recommendation?
It's a superintendent recommendation.
Then the double titles will be removed on those? The double titles will be removed?
Hmm?
Okay.
Can I clarify that it is a, it is a superintendent recommendation because I think it was missed in a previous update?
Okay. Then the next one was the dress code, the 3216, dressing grooming. So we're only seeing the 3216, which is teaching staff members. We currently also have the 4216, which is support staff. Is that going to go along with the new one? Is it going to be, some of it is wording is in here, so we're going to have two separate policies. We'll always have the 3,000 and the 4,000.
I anticipate that because they are two separate, in two separate categories, so I think we're just.
Right, but then you have C in here where you're talking about volunteer support personnel, higher professionals. So usually that would not be in a 3,000, that would be in the 4,000?
I think this was the standard policy that we received, so I mean, that's something that we can certainly discuss. Actually didn't catch that because I knew that there was a separate one, so I thought it was just.
Right, so if you look, we currently have the 3216 and the 4216. And then my other question was with our current policy, we have an enforcement section that it's referring to, but just basically saying what's going to happen, early warning and that type of thing that's following through. I don't see any of that in this, is there going to be a right for this policy or something like that would go into it? A right?
I'll also wish that I'll onto Dr. Lawton. Will there be a right?
Yeah, I purposely, when my recommendation to the policy committee did not put the enforcement in here because we typically don't put enforcement into policy. It's an administrative. So I know that we had that type of lingo in there. But my recommendation would be to, you know, especially when it comes to things like dress, it can vary. You know, you could have, you know, a very inappropriate situation or slightly different inappropriate situation. You could have someone who maybe is being spoken to for the first time or someone who's been recurring in the issue. So I'd like to leave the flexibility to the administration in regard to how it would be enforced. But I think that all policy is understood to have to be enforced, you know. So if the board's comfortable with not having that in the policy, that would be my recommendation.
And then a couple of other errors. E, principals may when reasonable, law protection may be made, that needs to be corrected? Doesn't make sense? Okay, and then the next one, we are getting support staff as mentioned, and I'm not sure if it belongs with the teaching staff member policy. And then their immediate supervisor? Who would be this, what's their supervisor?
It depends, but probably most of the time it would be the principal.
Okay. And then also the second to the last sentence on the first page. May require that the employee must comply. So may and must comply. And then also. And then also, uh, the last sentence on the second page, request shall be made in advance by the principal or on case-by-case basis. Would you want on case-by-case basis? And then the last policy, last one, I have a comment on this, three, one, two, one, two, and non-renewal, we did talk about taking out the certified mail and the three days. Um, I know we had specifically put in business days, um, but we have revised it, um, so I'm kind of curious why you want just to take three days. Is that gonna get into a problem like over a normal day weekend or something?
I did have the same question, um, but what I guess the consensus was is that three days kind of... It wouldn't be a situation that... Um, the consensus was that it was better if it's just the three days rather than three days.
Yeah, I, what I, what I shared with the board, uh, with the board committee was that, uh, typically, uh, especially when it comes to any kind of board action, uh, we s, we sent letters out the next day for all board actions. Uh, just our practice, uh, is, for example, for all resolutions anticipating that they would be approved, and of course, we can only give them if they're not, uh, those are prepared and they're ready to go tomorrow morning in the mail. Uh, so, it's not a, uh, it's not a burden, uh, on, on the administration from my point of view in terms of getting that out. I also think it's important to be timely when it comes to, uh, non-renewal, uh, and to provide an, an immediate type of, uh, notice to, to staff members. So, uh, as far as the certified mail part of it goes, um, I think that regular mail, uh, certainly the court has said that regular mail is a, uh, appropriately, um, viewed receipt, so you don't need to have, uh, certified mail. And, uh, my experience has, has often been that certified mail sometimes is more cumbersome to have picked up, because if the person's not there to sign for it, they don't get it. Um, and, um, uh, the post office, this is no slight to anyone who's associated with the post office, but they're not always very promptly getting the second delivery of the certified mail to, to the individual. So, that doesn't preclude us by sending something regular and certified, but I think it's better of a policy to just have it as regular mail. If that's an appropriate answer.
Anyone else? My turn. Okay. Um, three, one, four, two, if we can go back to that, certified mail. When this policy was revised, um, back in January two thousand thirteen, I'm sorry, February two thousand fourteen, certified mail was included in that because we needed to guarantee receipt. If you send something regular mail, how can you confirm receipt?
The, well, and, and this is, was just a learning that I had from sitting in court, uh, many years ago, uh, and the judge said that regular mail is receipt, as long as it doesn't come back to you.
Really?
Yeah. So, uh, you've run that by an attorney again, but that's, uh, I heard, I did hear it, uh, I remembered it. Um, again, it doesn't preclude us from sending something certified mail?
Well, certified mail...
But if we put it certified and don't get that green card back, it could, I, it could present some issues. If we do have it, it's great, you have that too, uh, but if we put it in there and we don't have the receipt, then it can cause some issues for us.
Can I make a suggestion to Moplin, because our concern was, you know, what if the teacher or the employee says, "I never got it"? By, 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 right, uh, first-class priority mail, you get tracked, and if you can track that something has been delivered.
Yeah.
Um, it's not necessarily delivered to the same, to the right person, but it says delivered. I mean, I know certified mail takes longer. Sometimes it can take a little week to get certified mail. But there are things that I know I get supposedly delivered, because I track it and it's not delivered to my house, I don't even ask it, but it's been delivered, so that's a problem.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. I think that's a good suggestion, because that, that will delay it and they'll drop priority mail off without it.
Okay, so, just a pull-up. Um, four, three, two, one, four, conflict of interest. I mean, easiest thing for me to do here is just to number the paragraphs, so if you quickly just number those paragraphs, you have two sets of paragraphs that are very repetitive, and I don't think they're both needed. So, if you go down to, it is paragraph number seven, it begins with, "The Board of Education discourages the presentation of gifts." Now, I'm calling that paragraph seven. Go down to paragraph nine. "The Board of Educat, the Board considers the presentation of gifts to staff members by pupils and their parents an undesirable practice, because it intends to embarrass pupils." It's saying the same thing as number seven. So, seven and nine are...
So, we could take out seven, because seven is meant to delineate teachers, so we can, we can take out seven.
Whatever, but I think it's, I think it's repetitive. Um, and then eight and ten are repetitive. Eight talks about, the Board directs the teaching staff members, instruct their pupils to express their appreciation by means other than gifts. Ten says, the gifts are strongly discouraged. So, I, you know, I would choose one and not the other.
And then I think what, what we should probably do is take out just the term staff gifts, because this policy, when I guess when it was originally written, felt there was an order to distinguish between teachers and staff, so...
Some of the comments that Mrs. Cherico made, I also had. I see one other grammatical mistake, um, it's probably a typo, a line grammatical mistake. On three, two, one, six, under dress and grooming, the very last paragraph says, on first page, I believe, I didn't copy the whole thing. I believe, yes. Um, staff shall inform the building principal when there is need to wear specific clothing of footwear. I believe it should be or footwear. Those are my comments. Thank you. Any other comments for first read or second? Now I can open to the public. Open to the public, anybody wish to speak about our policies, first or second read? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Moving on to old business. Is there any old business of the board? I have one. So, I've been on the board a long time, and every year, it seems like when it came to the meeting place, uh, for the year, I would bring up, "Why don't we rotate meetings to all the different schools?" So, every month, we would be at a different place. And we tried that one year, I forget how many years ago. Uh, that was before the era, I think, of even webpages, so no one really knew where we were going. There were a lot of phone calls made the night before. However, with the invent of webpages and, um, and, uh, the communication lines that we have now, um, someone approached me after last meeting and said, "I'm surprised you didn't bring up, you know, changing around the meetings again." So, I was remiss, so I'll do it again and bring it up now for board discussion. Um, we had talked about it several months ago, perhaps revisiting this. Should we maybe have one meeting a month at Copeland, maybe the first meeting every month, and then the second meeting, visit a different school? Or is it, is it more efficient to have a meeting always at Copeland? So, it's open now, bringing it up for board discussion. Mrs. Brooks?
Um, I would have agreed with you in the past, but now with the invention of our streaming, since we have the, the resources here at the Copeland cafeteria, I think, um, it's well-intentioned, but as of now, I think it's more efficient this time.
Sweet. Again.
Also, we're inviting, we're inviting more presentations, which I believe is going to hold in the district than we were before. Where if we were traveling, you know, might be isolated here, everybody's gonna care to see what's going on in the district. I think that's, and everybody eventually wants to be here, so...
Okay. Does anybody want to rotate the meetings?
As much as I hate that lead on Sanders and Greenbaum, you don't have it right!
I think it's best to keep it here.
And speaking of the live stream, is there any media activity coming? We have, we have our, we're curious to now have a...
Also to ensure that our high future is up and running completely on the web.
But back to the meeting place.
Who's gonna move all the tape?
So, logistically, uh, now that, you know, with the tables, with the microphones, with the, with the video streaming, um, I'm, I'm getting the sense that the feeling is, let's just leave them here. And certainly, we are now reaching people's living rooms...
Yes.
Uh, through our, through our videotape, and hopefully, we'll get a report back by the next meeting. Okay. So, I did my due diligence, and the meetings will remain here.
Right.
We're good. Okay. Um, any other old business? If not new business?
I know it's my thing to talk about the great music program in the district. Um, I did just attend, um, the sixth grade chorus band and strings performance. I was there as a parent, but I would have gone anyway. Um, just want to reiterate how great, um, all the music teachers are at Copeland. They really do a phenomenal job. I don't understand how they can do it, I don't understand how they do it in elementary schools, but I just want to, um, share my sincere appreciation for everything that teachers do, um, to get this going for all those kids, and that they don't sound like crying cats or something like that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other new business?
Something that we were given the opportunity to, um, do was to, uh, consider a presentation for Tim Bassett, which is something that we should be...
Let me give the background of it, and then I'll ask you for your that. Uh, the background was that the municipal alliance, Substance Abuse Council is going to be honoring, um, the memory of Tim Bassett, who unfortunately passed away at way too early age. Uh, he was instrumental in our, uh, in our program, um, at, um, Copeland. And in fact, one year, uh, he was hired as the inspirational speaker for the first day back, and so he was someone who connected to our children in terms of making the right choices, as well as motivating our staff. And so, the municipal, the Substance Abuse Council did reach out and ask the board, along with other elements of the community, would like to honor, um, to his family, Tim Bassett's, um, memory. So, I did send out a message to the board and asked them to think about ways that we might want to consider honoring him. So, Larissa, you've got the floor.
Um, I know that I was definitely interested in helping in any way possible. Um, I think this might be something we might want to consider, um, reaching out to the schools to see if, you know, there would be something that maybe the schools would be interested in helping, whether it's the students, um, participating as well.
Well, I know that he predominantly worked with Copeland, um, and this would be, this was going to be the Board of Education honoring, um, from our, from our perspective. Um, and, uh, so some of the things that I thought about, not necessarily momentarily, uh, perhaps, uh, having a plaque at the board office, and once a year, um, having a Tim Bassett memorial award for someone who really embodies the spirit that he brought to our district, and it could be an adult, or it could be a child, and I thought that would be a nice way, one way possibly. Uh, we have plenty of awards at Copeland already, in terms of community service, um, in terms of effort, uh, but yet we don't necessarily have awards for our community. It wouldn't have to be a teacher or, or student, it could be a community member who has worked hard to carry on what Tim really stood for. So, those were more of the lines I was thinking, um, that we can't spend taxpayers' dollars with a scholarship. I know that, uh, many years ago, we had a board member who unfortunately passed away. Uh, we each on the board contributed personally an amount of money, and we awarded a scholarship ten-year straight to an eighth grader, eighth grade student who embodied. We did that on a personal level. We could not, and we, you know, would not, we could not use taxpayer dollars. This wouldn't really be a monetary, this would be an honor. It, it would be an honor to be recognized as, uh, as the recipient of this support. So, that's something I'm throwing out as an idea to think about. Uh, we don't have to come to a conclusion tonight, we can keep thinking about it, but certainly by March or so, we should have an idea. I did reach out to Les Wexler and said that, yes, the board would be honored to present something on behalf of the district in his memory, uh, to his family. And it will be at the, the breakfast, I believe, which is the last week of May, every year. It's always a Thursday, I believe, the last Thursday of May, that we're all invited to attend. So, it's something to, yeah, I'd like to throw out. So, thank you, Larissa, and, uh, we can bring this up again at the next meeting with more ideas. Any other new business? If not, I can open it up again to the public, if anyone from the public wishes to make a comment. One second, please? May I have a motion, please, to open to the public?
No move.
See, everybody wants to open it, okay? So, Mrs. Shields, and a second?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Thank you.
I would just like to thank everyone for all of their help and support, and we're very excited by the, um, applications that we got, and, um, we'd like to present them so we can make this happen. Thank you.
In fact, I thought you didn't want them, because we left the end.
You don't think we let you get away without that awful one? Would you like to present it on behalf of the board, on behalf of the district? For those of you who don't know, these fine people, we are representing the Rockaway Township Education Foundation, Mrs. Harland, Dr. Monchar. Thank you, thank you. All right. We're looking forward to those presentations. I want to see those legos of the neighbor space, three. Anyone else from the public which can make a comment? If not, may I have a motion, please, to close to the public?
No move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Helberg? And may I have a motion, please, to close the meeting?
No move.
Mrs. Smith?
Second.
And Mrs. Brooks? All those in favor? All right. Meeting has now adjourned at nine twenty, nine eighteen, sorry. Thank you.